Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order our regular city council meeting for Tuesday, June 5th, 2012. Let everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Sylvia.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
Council President Grant is absent. Council Henderson.
Here.
Council Folsom is absent. Council Butterfield.
Here.
Council Langer.
Here.
Council Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. We have four items on our consent agenda today.
I'll move the consent.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Today, we've got two presentations. First, one that's not on there, is we want to recognize a retiring captain of our Sherwood Police Department, Jim Reed. Would you mind coming forward and just sit at the dais? And I bet our remote cameras can probably get you in frame for the folks that are not able to be here but will watch it at home. This month is, towards the end of this month, you are retiring from the Sherwood PD after being with us for five years. We held a reception earlier this afternoon at the department, which was quite full, guests from the county and neighboring jurisdictions. We're all here to thank you for your service to the Sherwood community and the region. On behalf of the Sherwood City Council, we want to also publicly thank you for your tenure with us. In five short years, you've done a fantastic job for us. You've been a great mentor to many officers in our department. You've held the job with grace and composure and steadiness, with an easy laugh, great experience. After your stance with the state police, and on behalf of the Sherwood City Council and the Sherwood community, we want to thank you and wish you all the best in your next endeavor. Want to thank your wonderful wife for her support in working for us. It's a little bit of a commute for you and...
Especially during certification.
Especially during certification. You led, you were the staff lead on getting the department accredited, which was a fantastic achievement for the Sherwood Police Department and for the community. And we want to thank you very much. You joined us at an important time, and you've done a great job for us. So I have a plaque to give you, and then if you want to say anything in your, you can, but it says, "Certificate of Appreciation Is Presented to James B. Reed, Police Captain, on behalf of the City of Sherwood and the Sherwood City Council, in appreciation of your leadership, devotion, and public service to the Sherwood community and to, and the Sherwood Police Department."
Sit down.
There you go.
Okay, I just want to thank you. It's been a real privilege to serve here. This is a great community, and I've been really lucky for the opportunity to be here. And you all support the Police Department so well, and the people in the Police Department have accepted me in a leadership role there, and so I was very fortunate. Just thank you again for that opportunity.
Want to make a comment? Yeah?
I would like to thank Captain Reed. Recently, I needed the Police Department's assistance for a friend, and wanted to thank him for what I would consider unparalleled customer service. Not only meeting with my friend, but calling my friend and following up with my friend. And it's really nice to know, in a stressful situation, that you have somebody like our Police Department and that team on your side if you need to call them, day or night, you know, card given out, cellphone, call me anytime. And I'm not sure that everybody receives that level of support from all Police Departments. I'm sure they all aspire to give that level of support, but this is something that happened recently that I'm immensely grateful for, and I will miss him. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Well, Jim, I just, I know that Ross and Jim Patterson aren't here, but I know that they, they're, and myself, are extremely appreciative of all the hard work and dedication and professionalism that you've brought to the city. It was really moving today to hear all the great comments from staff and others who just really have appreciated all the hard work and professionalism you've done. And I just want to thank you, from myself and from just all the city staff, for what you've been able to accomplish here in a very short period of time. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Come back and visit.
Next, we have the great honor and privilege of recognize the Sherwood Robinhood Festival 2012 Maid Marian Court. This is a great chance to recognize outstanding young women in our community who receive the honor of representing Sherwood, not just in our community, but throughout the region. And we are very appreciative of what they'll be doing for us and representing us in such a wonderful way. And in addition to the parents, who might know the level of commitment and work that's involved, but until you get through it all, you don't fully appreciate it. So, we're going in blind or with your eyes wide open, it's a lot of fun, but a lot of work ahead of you, and we are very grateful for your support of your daughters, because we are certainly very appreciative of everyone. So, I'd like to call forward Raquel Douglas. Raquel is one of the coordinators for our Maid Marian Court, and that's a lot of work, too. Really appreciate Raquel's help working with our Maid Marian Court. And the councilors, we're going to come around, because we'd like to meet each one of you individually, as Raquel gives a little bio of each of you, and you come forward, and we have a certificate to give you in appreciation for what you'll be doing over the, in the coming weeks and months, so.
My name is Raquel Douglas. I am the Maid Marian Court. Okay, let's start again. My name is Raquel Douglas. I am the Maid Marian Court for the Robinhood Association, 2012. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for their service to the city of Sherwood. Just tell you a little bit about the Maid Marian Court. It is not a pageant, it is not a contest or a club, but it is a select group of young ladies who are willing to serve and represent their community, and also be ambassadors to their community in other cities. The Maid Marian Court has been around for many years, and I believe that servant-hearted people are very rare, and they are pillars in our community. And I believe that each one of these young ladies sitting here has the potential to be an excellent pillar to the city of Sherwood. I'm going to start with our junior court at this point. I am very proud of this court, particularly Caitlin Starlane. Caitlin is eight years old, she's in the third grade, she attends Middleton School. Her role models are Megan and Lily, because they are fun and they make her laugh, and they make good grades. And her favorite thing about Sherwood is that it is a safe community. Next on our junior court is Kayla Wagner. Kayla is 10 years old, she's in the fourth grade, and she attends Hopkins Elementary School. Her role model is her mom and her teacher, because they inspire her. Her favorite thing about Sherwood is Stella Osen Park wooded trails. And her, oh, I got that, sorry. And our next junior court is Annika Tuddy. Annika is nine years old, and she's in the fourth grade, and she attends Archer Glen Elementary School. Her role model is her mom and her teachers, because they help people. And her favorite thing about Sherwood is the nice people. I'm going to read another young lady who is not present here today, but I will be presenting her with her certificate, and that is Tabitha Shiffey. Tabitha is 11 years old, she attends Sherwood Middle School. She is in the sixth grade, and her role models are her parents and her Aunt Miriam. Her favorite thing in Sherwood is the ice arena. At this point, we're starting with our junior court, and that would be Emily Marsh. Emily is 13 years old, she's in the eighth grade. Her favorite thing to do in Sherwood is riding her bike on the wooded trails. And our second junior court member is Janika Jordan. Janika is 16 years old, she attends Sherwood High School, she is a junior. Her role model is her father, because he is hardworking, and her sister, because she makes her laugh. And finally, this year, our Maid Marian is Miriam Marsh. Miriam is a junior, and she attends Sherwood High School. She's 17 years old. Her family actually goes back over 100 years in the city of Sherwood. She wanted to be on the Maid Marian Court, because she wanted to serve and connect with her community and uphold standards of the older generation. She wants to be a role model, and her role model is her father, and she wishes that she can, that the whole world can be like him. This is our 2012 Maid Marian Court. Thank you.
Parents, have we had enough closing? I mean, you have lots of chances of great close, parents around the corner, just make sure.
I was thinking for front center.
Great, thank you very much, please. You're going to represent us. Fantastic, we really appreciate your job. That is a wonderful group of young women, young girls from our community, and they're going to have a great time. Next on our agenda is Citizen Comments. Time to address counsel on any issue not on the agenda. If you haven't already and you're interested, please fill out a form and submit it, and we'll call you forward, or you can just come forward and submit it afterwards. Jean Stewart? Welcome, Jean.
Hi, Jean Stewart, 22595 Southwest Pine. Coming here to talk about the Sherwood Senior Center a little bit tonight. We're in the throes of a little reorganization with flows and fishes, and as always, there's a little change that some of us wonder about. One of the things that has happened that we found out at our last senior committee meeting, kind of abruptly, in fact, our director didn't know until 15 minutes before the meeting what was happening. So, anyway, we're losing our dishwasher, the cook's being cut back to 27 and a half hours. On the other side, our director will be 40 hours. These jobs are being posted, we don't know for sure who will step into them, hopefully the ones that are there will. But to give you an idea, for the last year, ending May 30th, home-delivered meals was 3,515. It's an average of about 14 a day. 29 people delivered those meals. There was 11,980 congregant meals that were served, that's in the dining room. That's an average of about 48 a day. And there's 299 people that participated in those. Volunteer hours worked, which I think is rather amazing, is 9,003 hours in a one-year period. It's about 36 hours a day of volunteers. So, we survive very heavily on volunteers. In fact, at the little opening for the new Canary Square, it was interesting, one chef who lives in Sherwood came up to volunteer to help out somehow. So, we did get some help.
Excellent.
From that. I think it's time for the city, maybe, to sit down and have a community get together to really define what the Senior Center up there is to do, and how the city is going to support it. In five years, we've gone through five directors. Change is always not, is not good that rapidly for seniors. We tend to like to have a more stable environment. You've got people that, such as Peggy Fettersville, who is a volunteer at this point, but she's been a director, she knows what goes on there. You get somebody from Lozen Fish, and somebody from the city council, and some people from the Senior Center, and some citizens, sit down and discuss what they're doing, and what should the policies be for the city of Sherwood, for the Senior Center. I don't think, at this point, we have any policies written down.
Well, let's finish.
And one way to look at is Wilsonville. They do have a commission for their seniors over there that's written into their charter and everything that could possibly want, one thing to follow. I know you've done a lot, I know we got an expansion up there, and I also seem to notice that we discovered that the federal government has their hooks into us more than we realize sometimes. But I remember from the first time that, you know, that once you accept those funds, you've got 20 years to perform whatever you get those funds to do for, and if for some reason you don't, they want their money, the property back or the money back. That's something just to realize. I know when the old library was built up there, the city had to buy, refund the county on the HUD grant for the park, property that was used for the library, because it was not the same use, and so it couldn't be kept. So, I appreciate it, and I hope, you know, as we move forward, we do look closer.
Thank you, Jean. So, thankfully, we've made changes with this budget cycle, or the proposed budget, to increase our support of the Senior Center. And with the change they're posting, they, part of the friction we've had of late was the director was split between us and Toawalton for a period of time, and we, and they were only working half-time, essentially. And with the change, they're suggesting of making the director full-time again, which is great, and knock on wood, the one that is part-time will become full-time, but we'll see how that washes out. The notion of continuing to meet and see what more can be done, or done better, has a lot of value, it needs to be done on a regular basis, so I really appreciate you coming down here today.
Yeah. One other thing, I might, with this new position and the definition, the director's going to be tasked to raise $28,000 in fundraising. That's going to be part of their evaluation for their job.
Gotcha.
And I can tell you, with the fundraiser we had, which the city came to, there's a lot of hours involved in that, and there may be kind of, you know, a conflict. So, the other thing is on renting out the building. I think it would be nice to sit down and see about the policy of no alcohol, because I think that has cut back in some of the revenue that we used to get for rentals.
That's a great point.
So, and I know Toawalton has it, and, but the, you know, if you rent it and you have alcohol, you have a monitor there, and you pay for it. So, there is ways to do it.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Jean.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address counsel on any issue not on the agenda? Moving on. New business. We have two items on our new business tonight. First is Resolution 2012-028, to authorize and direct staff to negotiate agreement with Washington County for the Community Development Block Grant for improvement to the Marjory Stuart Senior Center. Kristen, got you in mid-goal.
In October of 2011, staff submitted a Washington County Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $179,600 for restroom and lobby improvements to the Marjory Stuart Senior Center. The city received notification in February that we had been awarded the grant. The total project cost estimate is $221,263. The Friends of the Senior Center have agreed to contribute $5,000. Thank you, Jean. Did he leave? Yeah. Towards the project, and the remainder will be funded by the City of Sherwood. What you have before you this evening is a resolution authorizing staff to negotiate the agreement with Washington County for the project. The agreement is very similar to agreements we have signed in the past. However, this year, the county is requiring that the city sign a proprietary note and a trust deed. For that reason, the city attorney's office has recommended further negotiation with the county in regards to these documents.
Thank you, Kristen. I reviewed these, and, and sure, the county is going beyond what the feds require. And for this kind of a project in which things are wear items, and they're, what the prospect of some of these items, carpeting, lasting 20 years, is unlikely. So, question, are we ready to go, or what's our timing-wise? How prepared are we to implement? Are we two weeks out, pull the trigger, you know, or is it four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks? And the reason I ask is I'm inclined to ask counsel if they want to continue this item, so maybe we can get some of this resolved, so the council can see kind of more or less where we're going.
Sure.
Before we sign off on it.
Right. We are not quite ready to go. We will need to get an RFP out and bring a designer or an architect onboard to help us finalize some of the design elements of the improvements, and then go out to bid from there. I would say it's going to be July, August, before we're really ready to pull the trigger on this project, just because of the workload between myself and Bob Colati right now. We cannot proceed until we receive our notice to proceed, which we will not get until we sign the agreements. Once we sign the agreements, it does need to go back to the county and before the county commissioners for approval as well. So, there will be some, some time in there, depending on their meeting schedule, that we have to factor in. So, it's not as if once we sign it, we can just proceed anyways. So, there will be some lag time.
So, Chris and Tom, chime in, counsel, if you want me to be quiet while you ask your question, but would you like us to proceed with this resolution today? And you will only move forward if we have a reasonable resolution with the county?
Yes, we ended up changing a portion of this resolution from, from being authorization for me to sign the contracts to authorization to negotiate. So, if you move forward with this, that will also give us a clear signal as well as Washington County that we're, we're serious about this. We just want to make sure that we come to a place, we'll have to come back to you for, with another resolution, giving, or the city manager the authority to actually sign the contract. So, you would be fine by moving forward with this legislation tonight.
Okay, that makes me feel better. Other questions?
I just got a question about costs. The engineering firm to write the RFP, are those costs included in your estimate?
The engineering firm to write the, our engineering department, to, we are going to put together the RFP to go out.
With staff, our staff?
Our staff, our staff.
In-house.
In-house, in-house engineering staff will put together the RFP.
Okay.
And that's part of our contribution to the...
And that's part of our contribution. Any of the staff time and admin reimbursement and overhead that you see in the budget is not something that will be reimbursed for from the county, and that wasn't part of, that's actually just part of our match. So, that was used in the overall project cost, but not something that we will be reimbursed for. So, if we can keep those costs down, it's going to be a savings to us. Okay.
Other questions? Certainly, I think the entire community and the city council, we're excited about this project. Let's get, get the agreement right with the county, so that we're not going beyond what's reasonable. And I think they'll, they'll be understandable when they realize, this project is different than a, a building, a new building, using these kind of funds, and so. Counsel, counselor? More discussion or a motion, or?
I'll make a motion. I move we adopt Resolution 2012-028.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Seeing that all in favor of approving Resolution 2012-028, to authorize and direct staff to negotiate an agreement with Washington County for a Community Development Block Grant for improvements to the Marjory Stuart Senior Center. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Item B on our new business resolution, 2012-029, adopting the capital improvement project plan for fiscal year 2013. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is an annual event. We are adopting, asking you to adopt a five-year capital improvement plan for the city. This plan serves a couple of purposes. Number one, it's required by the financial policies that you all passed a couple of years ago. And number two, many of the spending allocations we get require that projects be on a capital plan. So, this capital plan is staff's, it's a compilation of committed projects, we know we're going to do, projects we know are planned to do in the future, that we have some reassurance of doing, and another level is projects we know as staff need to be done, but that are pretty far out there. The important thing is that here are the capital project plans that we see in the future. The second part of this is that this, and I'll read this, this CIP plan is only that, a plan. It is not a commitment, nor does it obligate funds. It is a vision of projects that combines input from council, advisory committees, and staff into one document. So, this is not a commitment document, it's a planning document. With that, you've all looked through it. Do you have any questions about the projects in there, or timing of any of them, or anything like that?
No. Question?
Yeah, Craig, I've got one question. Only one I didn't see on the list, maybe it's just titled or dovetailed under a different title, was the Frontage Road there by the Elks that there's been some work done on.
Yes, the Frontage Road by the Elks.
And I don't mean the roundabout, I mean the one there.
Right.
Yeah, at this point in time, our capital improvement plan doesn't have any expenditures for the Frontage Road. If you notice, the Kruger Highway 99 is the roundabout, which you mentioned. The current supposition from staff, at least at this point, is that private development will construct any roadways out there that are necessary in order to complete that project.
Okay. Okay. Other questions for Craig? Certainly appreciate you staff putting this together, it is an important planning document. We've done this for a few years now, and we're getting a bigger window, which is even better. It's going beyond what a lot of folks do, and that helps ensure us that we, yeah, think long-term, not reactionary, but let's plan. Sometimes plans have to change because of external circumstances to accelerate or slow down projects. The economy, the last few years, certainly is an obvious indicator, things have not occurred because of, because some projects never have not occurred or were delayed. delayed. So this gives us the blueprint to be able to respond as the resources are there and when the need arises. Any discussion from counsel on the proposed resolution? Motion by counsel?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yep.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt Resolution 2012-029 to adopt the capital improvement budget plan for fiscal year 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2012-029, adopting the capital improvement project plan for fiscal year 2013, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Public hearing, we've got five items under public hearing category tonight. First is Resolution 2012-030, adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations. Sylvia, do you have anything to read for this item or all of them, if you want to cover all of them at once?
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing on several items listed on the agenda. The first item would be Resolution 2012-030, adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations. Item B on the agenda, Resolution 2012-031, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Item C on the agenda, Resolution 2012-032, adopting a schedule of fees as authorized by the city, zoning and community development code establishing fees for miscellaneous city services and establishing an effective date. Item D, Resolution 2012-033, adopting the 2012-13 budget of the city of Sherwood, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes, and authorizing the city manager to take such actions necessary to carry out the adopted budget. And item E, Ordinance 2012-008, amending multiple sections of the zoning and community development code relating to landscaping, off-street parking, and loading requirements. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to submit testimony on the above said items. The order of business the council will follow is to hear staff report, receive public testimony, receive additional comments from staff, and then questions from the council. The hearing will then be closed, no further testimony will be received. Discussion by the council will follow. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded and limit your testimony to four minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. First, item 2012-030, adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations. Craig?
Thank you. This is the supplemental budget. We have tried throughout the year to keep you all posted on things that will show up on it, so this should all be reviewed. I'll go through the three funds that are affected. One is the asset depreciation fund, where we did not allocate enough money, we did not allocate enough money in the budget to transfer out all of the fund. This is a closeout of this fund, and this allocation just reflects that there was more beginning fund balance than anticipated. Street capital fund, we had significant changes in this budget as the timing of expenditures on capital projects did not really tie in well with what we had planned. So we had more funding on capital projects than we had anticipated this year, but still the capital projects themselves are within the budget for those capital projects, the total capital project fund. Capital projects cross fiscal years, and that's what this is about. Does that make sense?
Yep. You don't finish the projects by June 30th every time.
Yes. And the last fund is the telecom fund, where we changed interfund transfer to a interfund loan, and this changes the transfer payment to a loan payment. So that's what we have. Questions?
Thank you. With our monthly meetings with our budget, citizen budget committee, we're all kept up to speed quite well, which is great. Anyone like to give testimony on the proposed resolution? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2012-030. Questions for staff or comments from counsel on the proposed resolution? Motion from counsel?
I'll move Resolution 2012-030.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of approving Resolution 2012-030, adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Craig. Next item, Resolution 2012-031, declaring the city's election to receive state revenue.
This is also an annual activity. State statutes require that we certify that we provide certain services, which you did under the consent calendar. This is a resolution declaring your election to receive state shared revenues. Gas tax, cigarette tax, liquor tax, et cetera. That's what this resolution is about.
Great. Anyone like to give public testimony on the proposed resolution to accept state revenue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions from counsel to staff or comments from counsel or motion from counsel?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2012-031.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Debate or comment from counsel? Certainly, we do want to accept state shared revenue, I believe. All in favor of approving Resolution 2012-031, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Craig. Next item, Resolution 2012-032, adopting a schedule of fees as authorized by the city zoning and community development code establishing fees for miscellaneous city services and establishing an effective date. Craig?
Thank you. So this is the fee schedule that will be effective the 1st of July, and the memo refers only to those fees that have had changes in it, in them. And there's nothing here that is monumental. They're simple fees that have been changed. And then the whole fee schedule is attached to the resolution, and this is a schedule that we publish annually that has all of the fees for the city in it.
Great. Thank you, Craig. Citizen comment? Anyone like to address questions? Jean, welcome.
Jean Stewart, 22595 Southwest Pine. If this part includes the system development charges, I would like to suggest that the council take time maybe to reflect that what would happen, instead of collecting the fees upfront, you adopted a system, whereas to encourage people by not having such a high price tag to build and get started, and then with the increase in property values, take a percentage of those property taxes and dedicate them for the capital improvements that you need to do. And maybe you could get caught up a little bit faster on some of the things you have to do, you would encourage businesses to come in. That seems to be a hangup. We're just far enough off the freeway that a lot of commercial enterprises are not willing to spend money to come out here. And so we maybe need to think how we can entice them and then use that increased value to pay for the things that we need to do, instead of trying to catch it upfront. We don't seem to be very, you know, when we first did our plan for the city, we envisioned that we would be about 40% commercial and business and 60% of residential to keep a good balance so that it would lower the tax burden on the citizens. And we seem to be kind of far away from that, and I think it has increased our tax burden. And we need to sit down and take a serious look at this. It's not going to be corrected overnight, but if we can encourage businesses to come in, and if our high fees is keeping them out, maybe we should look at bringing them in, putting them down, and getting them to develop, and then start paying their share as they go along. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Anyone else like to give testimony on the proposed resolution? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2012-032. Questions of counsel for staff or questions with counsel? Yes?
I have, perhaps staff can just remind us how our SDC fees are set or what the basis for that is, just for those people who might be watching in the future and might not really understand when we do that or how we do it.
Sure. Well, system development charges are set based on the needs of growth-related activities within outside, inside the city of Sherwood. The process typically starts with doing some sort of plan, transportation system plan, parks master plan, streets, water master plan. And we have master plans for all of the system development charges that are in place. Those plans, which are reviewed by planning commission and ultimately approved by council, are then taken, and we end up doing what's called a methodology study to take a look at the plan, identify products, projects, figure out which portion of those projects are attributable to growth factors, which are attributable to existing conditions, as well as outside sources of money that may come in, which would affect calculations. There's a lot of calculations, especially when you're talking about transportation numbers, as far as calculating what the number ultimately is going to be. And then that goes through a process of notification, which is required by the state, as well as an adoption of methodology from council. We also have a system development charge. Ordinance in place, which is part of the municipal code, which outlines the different sections and how people get credits for certain projects, because if developer construction project that is related to that growth, then they would get credits for those projects, which we've seen a lot, especially on the transportation side. There's also system development charges which are outside of the purview of the city, especially like the Washington County TIF, which is, I guess is now the TDT, Transportation Development Tax. And Washington County has identified projects as well that the need to be done on a transportation need, and they've come up with a calculation, which is less than what the real need is, but still provides the developers who are adding trips to the system to be able to mitigate the impacts of what they're doing. So there's a very involved process for each one of these. We try to do one a year usually is what we've tried to do and keep them updated, just so that it can move forward in an expeditious manner.
Great.
So in your current resolution, you're not proposing that we increase any STCs? When's the last time we made it, when's the last time we made it change?
Actually, the STCs, as usual, we tie them to what's called the engineering news report, news record, and it showed a 2.2%.
2.2, okay.
Increase in STCs, and that's, we always tie it to this Pacific Northwest or the Seattle index.
And then clean water services, I think, is increasing theirs. Which is not under our control.
We don't control those, right. Thank you. So my next question has to do with the fact that recently during the budget committee, we reviewed some of our concerns we have with replacing capital in the form of turf fields. So I don't see an increase. I'm not necessarily wanting to have an increase. On page 11, which is page 88 of our packet, there's no increase in fees for any of those.
Clear fees, reusing the term?
Clear fees, right. And I'm wondering when the last time we had an increase? And we have recently come to the conclusion that we're not collecting.
We're not allocating enough.
We're not allocating even a tenth of the amount that we need to replace the fields, given similar, like you said, use and proposed use and future growth use, so.
What we have with the high school field.
We have what?
There is a fund on that.
Right.
With the high school field.
Right.
That is on track.
Right.
And so.
I believe the last fee increase was roughly three years ago.
Last year.
Last year, it was raised, but I think there was a more major one.
A couple dollars, okay.
A few years back. Staff is kind of taking a look at, at the possibility of raising fees to generate enough money to repair the turf field, and it's impractical with the number of users that we have on the fields. We are not going to be able to raise fees enough in order to adequately cover those costs. So what we're recommending is to come back to you at a future date with a more robust plan that can identify other funding mechanisms to get there, because just trying to do it through fees.
Right.
Would be prohibitive, and so we need a better plan. So we have not proposed anything now, just because it's not going to get us very far.
Right. And I understand that. And so what I guess I'm trying to impart is that we, at the budget committee, realize that this revenue stream isn't enough to keep up with the capital expenses of replacing that fee. So at some point, we're going to have to find funds or.
Yeah, the important thing is we need to set aside maintenance dollars in every annual, in every budget.
Right.
Because by having a turf field, the use per actual maintenance is night and day difference than equivalent grass fields. And so we just need to set those dollars aside and be disciplined through the budget process.
Sure. I think I have another question, if you'll indulge me. We now have a film permit.
That is correct.
So that's a new.
Yeah, we, yes, it's very typical for cities to have a film permit. We had a couple of productions last year and had no way to get any monies back for staff time and efforts in order to put those productions on. So we did a survey of some surrounding cities, and I've done something that's very minimal. Obviously, it's not a large burden, so we don't want to have a large fee. Some cities have a very large fee. We think we've taken kind of a reasonable approach.
Wasn't the kind of feedback when those two productions came to town, they said, you don't, you need to charge us something. You need to charge us.
They were very, very surprised. So.
So even this is a minimal fee?
So I think they're not here, but just based on their comments, I don't think they would have issues, because they were surprised that we didn't and encouraged us to actually put a fee in place, because they know that they are a burden, and they want to be a part of the community when they come, so.
So I think it's a good idea. One of those films was in my neighborhood, and it was a much larger disruption than I would have ever in a million years anticipated. So I think it's a good thing that we try to collect some of the cost of coordinating that and being a good partner in that type of a venture. That's it. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Discussion from counsel?
I don't really have so much of a question. I just wanted to point out to everybody watching on TV and in the audience that the very much controversial water utility bill, while the city didn't have any changes, Clean Water Services raised rates on seven different fees that they have on your utility bill. So when you're pointing the finger at the city of Sherwood, make sure it's pointed in the right direction. It might need to be pointed northwest of here.
Okay. Appreciate it. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move Resolution 2012-032.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of approving Resolution 2012-032, adopting a schedule of fees as authorized by the city zoning and community development code establishing fees for miscellaneous city services and establishing an effective date? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Craig. Next is Resolution 2012-033, adopting the 2012-13 budget for the city of Sherwood, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes, and authorizing the city manager to take such action necessary to carry out the adopted budget. Craig?
So in the interim, between when the budget was passed and today, we found two things that we needed to correct in the budget, and one thing just came up out of the blue that we were not aware of. They're listed under modifications of the budget. The first one is that the water fund, when we squinted between the capital fund and the operations funds, we ended up with an overstatement of $350,000 on the operations side. So modification one, we are recommending to the budget that was approved. So modification one that we are recommending to the budget that was approved is removal of that $350,000 in revenue. The second thing is that we found that a position was deleted from the public works budget. This is a position that's been vacant for a while, and in the preparation budget, we simply overran it. So we would like to put that budget, that position, back into the budget, and it's all enterprise fund-related, it's not general fund-related. To correct this problem in the future, I am working on what's called a position-controlled system, which is an automated system that is designed to allow us the most control over the number of positions that we have. The third thing is that just within the last month, the resurfacing of Highway 99...
It's happening.
Is happening. They're also going to have to tear up the red flex loops in the road, and they'll have to be replaced. Red Flex will pay for it. The state, however, will not build Red Flex, they will only build us. So we have added a $22,000 pass-through item. So that's something just to look, and it illustrates how closely we are budgeting that we could not absorb that $22,000. So those are three changes we are recommending in the budget that the budget committee approved last month. The resolution is worded such that you adopt the approved budget with the changes that staff is recommending.
Perfect. Citizens, anyone like to give public comment on the proposed budget? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on the proposed budget. Questions of staff from council, or questions, discussion from council? Certainly appreciate staff noticing the mistakes, clarifying them in this modification, and as well as to recognize a very recent action by the state, ODOT specifically, to do a great improvement in maintenance project through our community, and recognize all that impacts to us directly or indirectly. Discussion on the proposal, or the resolution? Motion on the resolution?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2012-13.
Dash?
33.
33.
Dash 33.
Perfect.
Second.
Move and seconded, discussion on the motion. And again, the resolution does detail the changes as described by Craig just a few moments ago. All in favor of approving Resolution 2012-033, adopting the 2012-13 budget, where the city of Sherwood, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes, and authorizing the city manager to take such action necessary to carry out the adopted budget? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Craig. Last item of public hearing tonight is Ordnance 2012-008, amending multiple sections of the zoning and community development code relating to landscaping, off-street parking, and loading requirements. Michelle?
Good evening, council. Just take a moment here to set up. Okay. Should I start? He didn't know how fast I'd been. Okay. So, good evening. The next phase of the development code cleanup brings us to the landscaping and parking lot layout standards. Tonight's presentation will provide you with an overview of the changes proposed to three chapters of our development code, landscaping, off-street parking, and onsite circulation. So in tonight's packet, what you have before you is the planning commission recommendation as exhibit one. Exhibit A is the development code proposed language changes, and exhibit B is with the track changes version, and exhibit C through G is testimony received at the planning commission hearing. So tonight's presentation on parking lots and landscaping will give you a little bit of background of the process that we went through to come up with our proposed language changes. We'll talk a little bit about the goals for site landscaping, and we'll discuss a brief overview of the landscaping proposed changes, parking lot and circulation proposed changes. We have a test case that we did on a site with the application of the proposed language changes, and we'd ask that you hold a public hearing on these changes. So a little bit of background about how we got to tonight's hearing. We began many months ago reviewing the issues with our existing code language. We took a look at multiple jurisdictions of their language and also some of their parking lot layouts. We had work sessions to identify what we were looking for, for some goals, and develop these proposed changes. We held an open house back in November with the proposed language changes. We've had two public hearings, one in January and one in February with the planning commission. And in the interim, we've met with developers and landscape architects to talk a little bit about some of the proposed code language changes. And a few weeks back, you might recall that we had a work session where we provided you with an overview of these changes, and here we are tonight with the hearing. So landscaping design is one thing that can really enhance or really detract from a commercial site or an industrial site as well. It can really draw people into a commercial building, or really make them not want to enter into there. So we asked planning commission to come up and start to consider what makes a great parking lot. And some of the things that they thought of were, they wanted to increase the quality of the landscaping that they see around the community. They wanted the parking lots to be safe environment to walk from their cars to the business. They really wanted to see more trees in the parking lots and give direction on what type of landscaping they wanted to see, to make the sites more visually appealing. And finally, we needed compliance with the metro functional plan and their minimum parking Stepping back a little bit, when we review parking lot landscaping, we look at many different things for site landscaping. We have the street trees and perimeter landscaping, which is really critical when we're separating different uses from commercial and residential or industrial. There's the parking area landscaping, which are everything excluding the perimeter landscaping. Often sites have visual corridor requirements, which vary between 10 and 25 feet, depending on the size and the street involved, and you can see the various places where parking area landscaping is included on a site. Here's some examples, photos of what we're talking about. We have the visual corridor and street trees you might recognize along Highway 99W. We have some landscape islands. Those are those interior places for landscaping. And also pedestrian walkways will be included in the parking area landscaping. So some of the major proposed changes that I'm going to talk a little bit about tonight are the landscaping is based on the number of parking spaces, and that's a real shift in thinking from our current standard of 10% of overall site landscaping. And the ratio of landscape islands per parking space is reduced, and it's begun to vary dependent upon what type of land uses. We're increasing the size of the landscape islands, and we're requesting that landscape islands need to be covered with landscaping and at least one tree, and require certain numbers of trees and shrubs based on parking spaces, rather than our current standard of just a variety of ground cover, shrubs, and trees. And taking a look at some of the major changes, the landscaping based on parking spaces, this will increase from 145 square feet per each parking space is the requirement there. Also, you can see that the landscape island ratios have been reduced, and the table to your right talks about some of those changes. We'll increase the minimum size of the landscape islands from 64 square feet to 90 square feet is the proposed change, and that's really to include the trees and the square footage. This is an example of a parking lot island that's 108 square feet, for example. Also, a major change is required that landscape islands be entirely landscaped with shrubs, ground cover, and at least one tree. So the picture on the left is what currently could possibly be in a site plan, and also the one on the right is what we're looking to gain. So you can see some of these overall changes are to really increase the overall quality of landscaping and to give more direction to planning staff as to what type of landscaping would be required. So another major change is required that trees and shrubs are based on the number of parking spaces. Currently, staff has no direction as to how many trees would be required on a site, strictly that variety. So it really gives no direction to a developer as to what the community feels is an important amount of trees on a site. So some other proposed landscaping updates will be the combination of trees. You can use existing vegetation to count for the amount of landscaping, and you get credit for existing trees that you preserve, and use the number of trees and shrubs throughout the site, so it's spread out. Some parking lot layout changes are a category for mixed use and shared parking clarification. We're adding, we're requesting that visitor parking be added to multifamily sites, so that would increase the amount of parking on multifamily sites and give some leeway and flexibility for those visitors that are just coming and going from the site. We're adding, requesting that minimum parking standards be increased for warehouse instead of straight industrial, because oftentimes those sites don't require as much parking for employment as a warehouse would. And a garage may count toward the off-street parking requirement, which is, you might have noticed, a metro comment that was raised during the course of the planning commission recommendation.
Yeah, that's a bad suggestion. My just early hint of my perspective.
So some parking design updates. We included a new wheel stop exception. We included a table for angled parking that was really hard to follow in the past, and we're allowing for uncovered bike parking. The current requirement requires covered bike parking, and pedestrian pathways should be included in parking areas for larger sites.
Did we have much testimony from our bicycling community members?
There wasn't any issue raised with allowing for uncovered bike parking. And finally, one of the tools that the planning commission used was the Albertson's parking lot, and they really felt that this was an example of something that they would like to see, and stood out to them as an example of some good landscape design for parking lots. So we did a detailed review of how much landscaping was on the site, and in this case, the perimeter landscaping is the outlined yellow, and what would be counted for parking lot landscaping is the interior. The Albertson's site had well over the amount of landscaping that would be required under the new standards, comparatively about 5,000 square feet more landscaping than would be required under the new standards, and it covered approximately 14% of the overall site. And the number of trees on the site, in this case, they had 34 trees, and what would be required for, there's approximately 200 parking spaces on there, and about 52 would be required under the new standards, potentially. So there was that difference that we discussed kind of at the work session last week about something to consider. So the next steps are, staff recommends that city council hold a public hearing on the parking lot and landscaping code amendments, and I'll take any questions that you might have at this time.
Thanks, Michelle. A couple of quick questions, and you might not have the answer immediately, but plant the seed, and then get some citizen input, those who might want to give testimony. I certainly have great, major concern over the change, the suggested change of counting garage space towards required parking. I think that's a horrific idea, because the net effect will be homes, single-family, multi-family, with no driveway, or short driveways that you can't technically park on, because you'd be in the sidewalk, and you can't block the sidewalk. Yes, it's the minimum standard, but I think it's just a bad, bad idea. And I know it's coming from metro, and I don't care. It's my perspective anyways. Where's a question? There was no question, and I apologize, but here's a question.
So one thing that might assuage some of your concerns about that is that we have a front yard setback, which is required 20 feet, so that would potentially would be part of the yard that would make up that driveway coming in. They would have to have a required 20 feet in the front yard for potential driving.
So then you're suggesting it's not necessarily attacking the designs that we're accustomed to for single-family attached, or duplex, or triplex units, but it, the big benefit is for multifamily, and to make garages that no one uses as garages, but use them as storage to count towards parking?
So the multifamily has a different standard, and those parking requirements are based on the number of bedrooms per unit, and that parking requirement for multifamilies.
Right. So you're not suggesting any change of the standard, but you're allowing multifamily to build garages and count them towards a parking space?
That's the current standard?
The current standard does not allow garages to be counted towards the parking standard.
For multifamily?
Correct. It does not. I'm sure of it.
Okay.
Because we had at least one project really complain about it.
If you'd like, while we're taking testimony, you can have Julie look into that. Ideally, the parking garages do count on multifamily, so a certain percentage of them.
So it just changed when I wasn't paying attention? Because I mean, I remember very specifically legislation we adopted that prohibited garages and multifamily to count towards the parking standard.
Let us look at the code, and we'll...
All right. So if I'm wrong, then help me out as to why this language is important, if it doesn't change anything. So that's the question, I guess. The next question I've got is on page 152, the section A that you outline, you say, "All new development with 20 employees or more shall include at least 2% of the required parking spaces for preferential spaces for either carpool or vanpool designations." I can see the value, to an extent, for that in our community, for office, commercial, industrial. How does this apply for retail, commercial? So Target has 50 employees, huge parking lot because of the traffic for the store. Does, do they need to, if they came in today under the standard, would they have to assign 1 in 20 parking slots to be carpool?
So I'm not exactly sure how many parking spaces that the Target has at this, let's just say they had 200 parking spaces, so then the 2% would be four parking spaces could...
I can see the value, to an extent, for that in our community for office, commercial, industrial. How does this apply for retail, commercial? So, Target has 50 employees, huge parking lot because of the traffic for the store. Does, do they need to, if they came in today under the standard, would they have to sign 1 in 20 parking slots to be carpool?
So, I'm not exactly sure how many parking spaces that the Target has at this, let's just say they had 200 parking spaces, so then the 2% would be four parking spaces could be marked van or carpool.
Say that again?
So, it would be include at least 2% of the parking spaces for car or carpool or van, so that would be four parking spaces, would be 2%.
So, there is no different standard for retail, then?
No, it's all new development.
Other question, page, top of page 151, where multi-use, folks can share parking, shared parking, assuming that all property owners have to agree to share, so if it's, somebody's going to be sharing, if Target's going to be sharing their parking with Albertsons, everyone has to agree? All property owners have to be consensual to such sharing?
No, it's an option that they can use if they were having trouble meeting the minimum parking requirements on the site.
Right.
So, they're not, if, if they want to reduce the amount of parking that's required, they can develop a shared use agreement.
Right. So, they have to, well, everyone has to contractually agree if, if they're not related, if Albertsons and Target aren't related, families, companies, if Target wants to use some of Albertsons to make their project happen, they would reach a private agreement with Albertsons to do that?
Well, it would depend on, I think a different example would be to use other businesses that are maybe in that facility, like, because it would be contingent upon a development, not two separate developments that are located there.
And that's, that's the crux of my point. So, Albertsons is built. It's locked in, it's on the, it's on the, on the books for 10 years, then Target shows up, and because of what they want to do, they don't have enough parking. Hypothetical, they can, with what you're suggesting, go to owners of the Albertsons Shopping Center and say, "We're gonna, we want to reach an agreement with you to share some of your parking spaces so that we can meet the standard on our side," assuming we've got the various uses, and so it's, maybe it's a bad example, but we cannot, one developer cannot impose a shared agreement on another property owner, point blank. Right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
You had a work session while I was out of town related to tree canopy, and I unfortunately missed it, but there was, there's, there was concern in testimony in the doc, in this document from folks about their, just the tree requirement being on the high side, but might be much more reasonable if the tree requirement counted the street trees as well, and then it would essentially achieve what we want or what folks want with the example of the Albertsons and the theater parking lots.
Sure.
Is that, is that a fair perspective of what some folks have testified?
Well, at the work session, it was propos, it was discussed, as well as the Planning Commission, as a, as a possible outcome, because it was, the Albertsons site was what the Planning Commission believed to be a really great example of what we wanted to see with respect to number of trees on the site. So, adding street trees to that site would bring that to achieve the amount of number of trees with the new code standards. That was the one issue that the Albertsons site was lacking.
Okay.
So, it's something to consider and, at this hearing, and discuss whether to include street trees or not, and I have some suggested language if you'd like to see where that could be plugged in for your review.
That'd be great. Let's do that after citizen comment.
Okay.
Any other questions before we have citizen comment?
I have a comment.
Great. Counselor?
I'm not so much concerned about the landscaping of the parking lot as I am the size of the parking stalls and what kind of vegetation I'm going to be parking my car under. So, I don't see anywhere in here where you address any of that. So, those are my concerns. The other question I have is, like it says, is the type and the size of the vegetation. There's really no, there's nothing in there that says you're not going to put a cherry tree in the parking lot that I'm going to park my car under. The other thing is, to me, trees are trees. If I have a piece of property, I want to count every tree on my property towards the requirement. So, trees are trees, whether they're on the street, the parking lot.
So, with respect to the parking lot dimensions, those are not changing. The current dimensions are nine by 20 for a standard parking space, and the compact space are eight and a half by 18, and you're allowed 25% to be, of the overall site, to be compact spaces.
But, you're proposing that now we have a carpool-van requirement. Right now, with the handicap parking you have, you can't get within 100 feet of the store now. If you're going to impose van and parking, or van and carpool stalls, you're pushing the consumer even farther out to the street.
So, the car and van pool is pretty much existing language. It just wasn't ever defined what percentage that would be encouraged. So, businesses are required to put those in place, but the number wasn't given as to what percentage that should be. So, the number considered was about 2% would adequately meet that requirement for the van and carpool, and again, that's another Metro functional plan requirement.
But, I haven't seen any place where it says, "This is a designated car, carpool, van, parking stall." Anywhere I've been around.
So, I'm, I'm.
Why are we?
I'm not sure exactly what year that, that was enacted. It's for all new development, so perhaps there have been mechanisms for getting away from that. Like Oswego, for example, also has this requirement. I looked at today, and their requirement is 5% is for car, van, for employees over 20, the number of 20. With respect to the landscaping requirement, cherry trees, or most of the landscaping requirements would be found in the landscape manuals, kind of discussed before, so it would be a list of recommended trees that were, would be proposed, and so we would hope that a developer or a property owner would put in trees that he would want his customers and clientele to park under and not be prohibitive in that manner.
I recognize that, that you have a recommended list of trees for them to plant, but you don't have a list that says you can't plant this type of a tree.
Well, within the street tree requirements, we do have prohibited list, and that can be something that we can add. We have invasive trees. Also, the code suggests that the trees are native or able to grow in the Pacific Northwest, and I know that the cherry tree would probably qualify for that, but it could be something to be considered. There'll be a list of prohibited street trees or prohibited trees for landscaping. A cherry tree could possibly be put perhaps near a building, and then it would be fine. Maybe a tree not recommended to be put in an interior parking lot island.
Any more questions, Counselor Butterfield?
No.
Counselor Clark?
Are we just asking questions to this point? Okay, I have, I actually do have a question on that, the A, 2%. So, what, what you're saying is that this was enacted after development in the City of Sherwood already existed, which is why we are not seeing any van or carpool, because I have been all over the city and I have never seen a van or carpool designated parking spot.
I think there's some at the schools, but that's it.
Is that, is that correct?
Right. So, the existing language was all new development shall.
Include preferential.
Preferential spaces for carpool and van pool. And I'm not aware of whether the city has.
What the standard was, if it was, if it was one or a thousand, and depending upon when it's placed.
It just said.
Yeah, there might be one at the schools, one of the schools. Great. Other questions before we take citizen comment?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
With regard to existing trees, are they given any extra credit for protecting them?
Yes, if you look at the proposed language, it include, it counts trees based on the size. Some will be granted the medium based on the caliper inch, and they definitely count toward required landscaping.
But, do they get extra credit?
Do they get extra?
I'm just trying to, like, with the trees we talked about previously, it's great to have lots of trees, but it's even better to have the big, mature ones.
So, each tree is more than six inches and up to nine inches in diameter, counts as two, two medium trees. So, that's that size range, and each additional three tree, three-inch diameter increment above nine inches counts as an additional medium tree. So, anything over three inches.
Double, triple, quadruple value.
Gotcha. Good. Okay.
And then also, you recall with the tree canopy that there's bonuses there for preserving trees as well.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about. The carpool stuff, I, I don't really think it's necessary in our, in our community at this time. I've reading through all this and reading through some of the comments that were sent in from other outfits. Generally, parking lots like Targets, for example, are just enormous, and there's, there's a few technical reasons that push that parking lot to be so big. I'm not familiar exactly with what all they were, but the 99W trip cap may have had something to do with it. Parking stall lengths and widths may have had to do something with it. I just want to make sure that when we're revising this language, if there is a way to avoid situations like that ginormous parking lot that isn't even full on the day after Thanksgiving, that you're working towards avoiding that situation again.
So, I think you recognize an issue that our minimum parking standards do kind of account for that worst-case scenario, and when you add all the different uses that a site like Target has, going on at the same time, a lot of businesses, what we hope to achieve with the shared and multiple use proposed language is some delineation that they can show, hey, the Red Robin Restaurant, somebody might pop over to Target, or they might have a different use at the time, or a different time of day that can account for that parking space.
It, I, there's probably nothing we can do at this point with regard to the 99W trip cap language and how that might affect the same situation.
That's not up for consideration. It's not a part of this code at this point, so. Separate action could deal with it, but not today.
Same, same big, huge parking lot problem, right? Okay.
Great. Any other questions before we open it up?
Sure. Before, before you do open it up, though, I want to answer, address your question in regards to single-family versus multifamily on garages. So, if I can direct you to page 154 of the packet.
Yep.
At the very top, left-hand corner, this is a table that talks about minimum, maximum parking standards. Single, two-family, manufactured home on a lot, there's an asterisk there. That asterisk, if you turn it to the next page, is a provision for building of garages associated with the residential dwelling type.
Yeah. So, that was such a mistake.
That asterisk is.
Whenever that changed.
Yeah, on multifamily, and so, so it only applied to a single family as far as garages not counting for, garages counting for parking.
Great. After we do citizen comment, I'm gonna, I'll advocate for a correction, because it is beyond my, from my, just from my perspective. It is just bad, bad, bad planning. And I, I don't know when it slipped through, and I, because I remember this entirely too much detail. So, let's open it up for citizen comment. Anyone want, anyone want to give input on the proposed ordinance 2012-008? Please fill out a form, come forward. Eugene Stewart has done so.
Hello. Yeah. Eugene Stewart, 22595 Southwest Pine Street. A few things is that, as you increase the parking lot size, does that then take away from the buildable size for the building on the lot? So, has anyone stopped to consider what is the cost to the person building the building if he's got so many square feet he needs? Now, he finds his parking lot has increased in size, what does he do? Does he have to shrink the size of his building? And then, you know, does that take away building fees? So, you know, what's the happy medium? And the other, another question is, like, downtown, with all the trees down here, it's almost overkill in some respects because it's very hard to identify businesses as you drive by because the trees interfere with all the signage that you put up. So, you gotta allow so that it's not, as people drive by, they gotta know what's there. Well, one extreme example, but that's on signage, I won't go into that. So, what is the cost to the developer? Because, I mean, the people who shop there are going to pay the price. There's no doubt about that, and does it make it any more enjoyable to go there? I mean, to me, the Albertsons parking lot is kind of junky. Les Schwab is, they keep it up fairly nice, and the lawn's trimmed, and I don't know why, but it's more appealing than driving into the Albertsons parking lot, but yet, you know, they're two different things. And what about a building that they need to put an X number of trees up that start interfering if they have solar panels on the building or someplace on the property? How do you work it so that those trees maybe also interfere with the neighbor who may have solar? So, how do you balance these out so that you don't rob from Peter to pay Paul? I think it needs a little bit more study to see how these will move in and affect. The other situation is with trees downtown, you have a lot of flat roofs, and most people will not go up until the gutters are plugged, and they find out the leaves have blown on their roof and plugged up their gutters, and all of a sudden, water's leaking in their store. They just, you know, you don't go up on a roof that often. So, I think these are items that maybe have been missed. On the 2% for carpooling and van, are you talking about people coming to work by carpool and van pool? Or are you talking about people parking then and then driving off into Portland, or Beaverton, or Hillsborough? If that's a situation, then you need to, in my opinion, develop a site that is away from the congested commercial area and probably, so that people can go there, stop, get in, change, and go on their merry way. It's away from the congested area, and you're moving some of that congested area out to a place that isn't congested, and it's easy to get in and out of. So, that may be one thing to think about is that, you know, what are the results of what you're doing? Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Anyone else want to give citizen comment on the proposed? Well, I know some of the answers for Gene. The van-carpool language is intended for those carpooling together to go to that place of business, not to park and then go off to another location. In Old Town, Old Town does not have parking standards, so this. In Old Town, Old Town does not have parking standards, so this, it doesn't affect Old Town in any fashion. And just as another comment for, for Gene and his testimony, the proposed parking standard, there is a minimum, and then there, there is a maximum. So for folks that are not wanting to build as many spots for their, their new Target, for instance, or XYZ facility, they can come in at the lower end, or on their own elect to have a more intense, higher level of, of parking in their project. But with that, we'll invite staff back up and see if we can reach some agreements and conversation on, on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. One thing I wanted to point out is we take written testimony, as long as the testimony period is open. Just wanted to point out that Susan Claus dropped off a very large packet of material. Just want to let you know, it will become a part of the record, and obviously, if anyone wants to take a look at it, it's here for them to do so.
Great, thank you very much. Another follow-up question. What is the law as dictated by, advocated, dictated, by Metro with carpool, van pool? What is their standard, that they're wanting us to have a minimum level of achievement?
So we need to address whether, if, if a business has over 20 employees, we need to provide van or carpool is the requirement.
It doesn't say how much they have to provide, it just says they have to provide something.
No, so I was providing some...
I know, you're providing an option, but their language, forgive me to be the extremist in one way, but if we said that per 20 employees, they had to provide 0.01% parking, so that basically for any project, the most they ever had to compel themselves to do as a mandate would be one slot. If they wanted to do more, they certainly could do more. Or is there some minimum standard that they want us to adhere to on this point?
I'm looking at it right now, and I just want to be...
Great.
Clear about that.
Because of your standard...
I think it's in the 410 section.
And while, while Michelle's looking, if there is not something that specifically says a percentage, my recommendation would be just leave it as it is, rather than putting a percentage, because...
Let the developer...
We're trying to make it more clear, not more complicated, but we'll let Michelle confirm whether or not there is a specific amount.
Great.
Mayor, while they're looking that up, just a quick point of order, I'm not sure that you actually closed public testimony, I wasn't sure if you'd wanted to do that before.
Oh, thank you, I will close the public testimony, there was no other one, no one else wanted to testify, so. Public hearing portion is closed. Thank you.
There's an exemption.
How does that car, van pool thing get enforced?
Great question. Council of Bustle Butterfield asked a question, on this provision, how would it be enforced? Well, in a new development, they would put up at least one sign that said it's for carpool, van pool, but it would be pretty much self-reporting if it's being used that way or not. You know, if a employee complained that they were carpooling and, and the boss's girlfriend was parking there and not carpooling, then maybe the employee would turn them in and cause a problem. But other than that, it's, it's really a self-enforcing kind of thing.
That's correct. Through the site plan review process, we would require them to be marked on-site, we would go out as part of the final site plan review and make sure that they are, and then whether or not people were...
Using them that way or not.
Using them that way. I mean, it's the same with compact spaces. I drive a minivan, and I park in a compact spot because I fit. You know, I'm probably not technically compact, but I fit, so.
Yeah, and I go to work, and I, and I park in two.
Sorry.
Council Clerk, while they're looking.
Yeah, so did you ask them, do we, are we required to have this?
There is some standard, there is some requirement in Metro ordinance that requires us to deal with this here, but we want to see if there is a, if we need to put, put a percentage in there or not, it's kind of...
Up to us?
Is what I'm trying to ascertain.
Um...
Michelle, or Julia is, is suggesting that if there isn't, we could not adjust this language at all, and it's...
Could we, is there a possibility that we could adjust it to add excluding commercial property? Because I don't see why, I mean, I understand if it's an industrial property, and I don't think we should, you know, pick on the industrial property, but if we were forced to, because that's part of the code that we're working with. But I don't see this applicability to a commercial property like Target, since we're talking about Target all the time, might as well throw that in there. Because I don't see, you know, a mom's club getting together and saying, okay, we're done with our meeting, let's all carpool to Target.
Yeah, the intent isn't for, for customers to be carpooling, the intent is for the employees to try to carpool, or incentive, try to provide some sort of incentive for, for employees to carpool.
But there's also not a designated area for employees to park, so it seems...
As a, as a developer, you could, it sounds like you can put the carpool spot or spots anywhere, so it could be in the far corner.
But it says preferential spaces, and that doesn't necessarily mean the best? I mean, that sounds like the best, me.
And I've seen that more commonly used in office buildings, for example, where, you know, the, the carpool or van pool spaces, and larger types of...
So more for the employees than, so they could designate it to the rear of the building?
Because it's close to the back door where they all come in and go.
Right. Okay, okay.
So you're still looking at what the standard is, so let's move on to other parts, and we'll revisit that. If, we do not have to adopt tonight. I would love to hear council's perspective on the standard that gives me the biggest heartburn of all of this, which is the counting of garages towards any parking standard in any residential zone. Does anybody think we should? Council Anderson?
Um, I'd like to ask, I'd like to make a comment, but I'd also like to ask a clarifying question. Can you name a multifamily development where parking garages were counted towards the parking requirement?
Yes.
Yes.
And I bet I can, I bet I can name the first one. Creekview.
Yes.
Okay.
So, can I?
Sure.
And honestly, that's why we were proposing the visitor spaces, which then Metro said, wait, you can't, you can't do that because we've got the minimum, and we explained, you know, we, we spoke with them actually a couple times and explained, this is Sherwood, there's no transit there, you know, and explained the situation, and they said, okay, we, we get, you know, we can understand the visitor, but the garages don't count. So that, that was kind of a back and forth, and we can continue a back and forth, but we specifically got that comment from Metro.
So is that a big, is that a big problem there, because they're not using the garages to park?
Yes!
Yes.
Yeah.
And there's nothing, nothing in all the code language we have, nothing says they actually have to be used for that?
We actually have. Honestly, we, and I, we had a lot of complaints, we had a lot of concerns, we, we actually followed up and said, we have reason to believe that you're not using your park, your garages for parking as proposed, you're not meeting your minimum parking standards. They provided us copies of their, their lease agreements, they basically evicted people out of their garages, they, they demonstrated to us that they were taking measures to make those spaces available for parking. Whether or not that happens on a long-term basis, we don't go back and check, we don't, we, I haven't, I, I'm sure that, I don't know if the chief has received complaints recently, but we, for a long period, we were getting a lot of comments on a regular basis at the counter, just going, do something about this. And honestly, we haven't heard anything recently, I don't know if there's the same issues. They did add a few more parking spaces, just as an apartment complex, because they were having so many problems from their tenants.
Yeah, so I...
So what is the, from Metro's, help me, help us understand why Metro thinks this is a good idea? Or why we, why we felt compelled to comply with this in our, in our own community?
We're required to comply with Metro functional plan requirements. Metro said, and I think throughout the region, different jurisdictions were having different parking standards, and so they set a, a maximum minimum, but basically, cities couldn't require any more than this minimum amount.
Based on?
Um, honestly, I don't know. I'm sure there was a lot of studies and thought that went into it.
But is it based on a minimum number of parking requirements based on the size of your multifamily development?
Um, yeah, from, for multifamily, it's based on the number of bedrooms.
At Metro as well?
That's the Metro minimum requirement that we're allowed to require.
So, so this language is basically from the minimums, and the Zone A and Zone B are the Metro functional plan required minimums, or MAC.
So when we contact, go ahead.
So that, so then as we sought comments out, we kept the same language that we had had there before, and they're like, hold on a moment, you're updating your code, and this language won't fly, it doesn't meet with the garage requirement. And you notice that in Exhibit D. So based on that, we developed a compromise, which is footer number three, which allows one on-street park, if there's 28 feet of frontage, then that would count toward, then only one parking space would be required. But if they didn't have that frontage, then they needed two parking spaces, effectively.
So how would that apply to Creekview crossing?
It wouldn't.
Thank you.
The visitor is what applies to Creekview, the, we, we basically said, here's the minimum for a, the apartment complex, and we're requiring a visitor's parking, or a number of visitor spaces as well.
And what was the requirement for visitor spaces?
There wasn't a visitor...
So what are we proposing? Right now, there is none.
So what did we require at that development?
None. There was no requirement for visitor parking, which is the problem.
So 15% of the parking, overall parking spaces need to be visitor. So if you have...
Under this proposed language?
So that we're creating some more parking in those multifamily developments. And that's a workaround, because if Metro doesn't say what's required, then we can kind of create a requirement.
So what in a, pick a project, Cedar Creek one, of the, how many parking spots did they originally build, and how many garages did they build?
It's Julia's project, luckily.
So I can get an idea of the percentage of the overall spots were garages?
I don't know off the top of my head. I want to say, I want to say about 250 spaces, and I'm really literally doing this off the top of my head.
I don't think it's that many.
You don't think, um, there are 183 units, not all of them have garages, I think there are...
I believe half of them have a garage.
Or less.
Roughly. That model has either three or four per building.
And it's a single car garage.
I can run upstairs and actually pull that file if you want to continue asking questions.
Yeah, let's, um...
So I think we want to, end of the day, we want to continue this thing. I would love to see language that you put together to suggest that the total tree count includes the street trees.
I have a couple of places where I could put that in, if you'd like to see and kind of think about it.
Yeah.
At that place, those places?
I think that would be great.
Okay.
I, I think we'd like to know what Metro language they're suggesting is required, the minimum language required on carpool, van pool. And I would like suggested language for us to consider that requires, that calls garages storage units, and not parking spaces. And they don't go towards any parking standard in any zone. And as a backup, find out roughly how many garages, as a percentage of the overall parking at...
Creekview.
Creekview, were garages. Because, and we could keep the standard, because we could keep the standard, we can do a lot of things, we could keep the standard, call garage as storage, which they generally are, and then still throw on top a 15% visitor parking standard on top of the minimum. And that would be really good for our community, in my, in my world, in my perspective.
Are you thinking in multifamily or just overall?
Um, the 15%.
So all residential units would, all resi, in multifamily?
Multifamily, the 15%.
Okay.
So, so Mayor, I want to chip in here a little bit, because I appreciate where you're going, but I think it's important to, to note that the last time that we went down this path of challenging Metro in regards to regional function plans was out on the Redfern project, and we essentially, Chris is over there smiling because I think he can see the dollar signs adding up his head. So I, I really think that in, in the interim here, I think staff really needs to go to talk to Metro and work through some of these issues with Metro to come back with some, some things that, that we can possibly do, because I appreciate where you're going, but I also don't want to just automatically end up in a lube appeal here, which is going to cost everybody money and time and effort, so.
But, right, fine, but from my perspective, a three-wall structure with a door that rolls up can be called storage. And I don't think Metro has the authority to tell us that it's not. So, other comments?
I would just like to see one other item added in there, a list of prohibited fruit-bearing, sap-bearing trees in the parking lot itself. They want to have next to the building or out on the street, so be it.
So, so one of the options would be to include that in the manual that we're creating, and create a prohibited list that includes those kind of messy trees? Yeah, we'll explore it.
I, I think it could be in either place, and if it's, if it's council's desire to put it in the ordinance, we can certainly do that.
What if it's a big retained tree?
Posted sign, do not park under this fruit-bearing tree. Pitch dripping tree.
You put the van pool there, right?
Then that's where you put the pedestrian walkway. Right to the big tree.
Other feedback from councilors on the proposed ordinance before we continue it?
I just have one comment. If, if staff is going back to talk to Metro, I know that can be a challenge, and I appreciate Tom's comment, but have any of them come out here and taken a look at that development? Because I think that that would make a huge difference, because what I'm trying to impart is that that standard, with that level of multifamily housing, has created nothing less than a nightmare over there. And it's a nightmare that, that migrates north and south. Well, not necessarily north, because there's nowhere to go. But as you migrate south, you've got the businesses off of Handley and that development there, because, because people who can't park in that development, because there aren't enough parking spaces, while they appreciate the visitor parking goal, anybody can park there. So it's not really visitors, because I visit there weekly, and I never park in a visitor spot. And, and so, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not taking, I don't want you to feel like we're taking this out on you, that you put this in place and we're all angry, but if anybody came out and said, well, can you really explain to us? And they, they could come out at like 5:30 or 6 o'clock at night, and you would see how, how Creekview, I mean Cedar Brook Way, is completely parked side to side. In fact, I would challenge you to get a fire truck into that street in an emergency without taking out four or five cars, and then making that sharp right turn to get into the back row of homes that, or the back row of development that's there to serve us, you know, a 911 call. And, well, that's not Metro's fault, what we're trying to do is provide some... And while that's not Metro's fault, what we're trying to do is provide some balance because what has literally happened in our communities, people who used to live in a, in a, in a single-family dwelling have lost their home and are now living in a multifamily complex like that. And they have two cars and they have one parking spot. And that has created, and I agree with the, with the mayor, even though I don't think there's much storage there going, I wouldn't say it's more than 50%, but I see people who, and what they do is they park in front of their garage, not in their garage.
Right.
Because when...
Well, that's kind of as one of their spaces.
Right, right. And so if Metro, or somebody from Metro came out or we took pictures or something to try to have at least a dialogue about why this is not a good fit for our, our community and while we're trying to make some modifications to make livability a higher and more long-term goal, I think that, you know, that would, I hope that that would not fall on deaf ears.
And my, my hope is that it won't. And when we spoke with them a little bit about the visitor parking, they were at least, they were at first kind of reluctant on that. And I explained that exact situation and I'm like, okay, we understand. So I think if we can explain it a little bit more, push it a little bit more, I think that we'll see what we, what we can do and how far we can get and...
Can we require, can we perhaps follow the mayor's suggestion of storage and then require visitor parking permit?
I'll, I'll see what we can do. And, but just to clarify, in Creekview, there is no visitor parking. And again, that's...
No, there is visitor parking.
Well, like three spaces or something like that.
Yeah, it's got a big V on it, but, but it's all filled up by residents.
Yeah.
Another idea, you know, again, the part of the game I, in a weird way, kind of enjoy is taking the Metro requirements and then messing with them and finding loopholes like we have in other areas.
Did you say that out loud?
Can, can we...
And that's why they fix the loopholes.
I know. So as part of this minimum standard, can, just thinking out loud, and I don't care, I'm glad we're broadcasting it, can we say that those must be, those must be in the project and not street, on-street parking? So none of this, none of the required parking can be along the street? And then require a big street with angled parking on both sides? Just a thought. Making it creative.
We'll look into all of those creative ideas.
First off, appreciate counsel speaking up and letting us know the passion that you have for this issue because it does really help us to go and sharpen the tools that we have and really go back to Metro and, and, and come up with something that works for Sherwood. Because what works for, for other areas in the region doesn't always work for Sherwood, so I really appreciate your comments.
If we had, if we had a triment level of service of buses looping throughout all our neighborhoods and really helping, doing a great job, then we might be less passionate. We got a deadhead that comes to downtown and then bolts out, goes down 99 and that's it. Other comment?
Yeah, the only other comment that I had in the same kind of vein as Linda was talking about, I mean, I, I think it would be hard to get Metro to come out here, but maybe when you're talking to them, if you had a little video clip of, okay, this is at 5:00 PM, this is at 7:00 AM on a Tuesday, this is at 10:00 AM on a Sunday, on that development, and then down the street, and we're going down the street, oh, no, 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 we're not going to park here. Okay, we are now four blocks away from the facility, just so that they can look at it and say, okay. And, you know, four or five different days, different times, so that they can really see the impact that it has that someone who has small children, maybe a handicap, is a senior, would have a very hard time living in a facility like that.
Thanks.
Perfect. Any other comments from counsel on this item before we move it to a date certain in the future? When does, would staff suggest we move it to?
Probably next year. What's the next meeting?
June 19th is the next meeting. For that, July 3rd is...
Are we meeting on July 3rd?
Well, we're going to ask that question. How many councilors, it's, July 4th is a Wednesday this year.
Right.
Are you out of town? Counselor Langer's out of town?
I'm out of town.
I'm probably out of town, but I'm not positive.
So we might, July 3rd might not work. So let's assume that it doesn't. So is June 19th or July?
17th.
Yeah, June 19th would be...
You have enough time?
If not, we continue it again.
If not, you can continue at that meeting.
Okay.
So I, any other comments from counsel before I make the motion? I would get to my proper stuff to read. I would, I move, we continue ordinance 2012-008 to June 19th, 2012. Staff will return with some feedback on points raised, suggested language options. The luck will be able to act as a reminder that the public hearing is closed, counsel can choose to reopen it on the 19th if they so choose. That's the motion.
Second.
Who wants to second a debate on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, staff.
We knew that was going to be fun, why we put it at the end. City manager staff reports.
I don't have a whole lot tonight except for just wanted to say thank you to Kristen and Public Works and everyone for all the hard work they put into getting the Canary Square Plaza celebration underway. And what a fun time. I, I felt very relieved when I saw the kids just having a blast in the water feature and we're still having some issues with getting the water feature to run continuously, but the contractors working hard on getting those resolved. So in the next few weeks, we should have it on for the rest of the summer.
Outstanding, yeah, huge crowd.
Here, here.
Great job, everyone. Be a wonderful asset in our community for years to come. Other reports? Great, council announcements, certainly the forecast of the lying weatherman is wrong for Saturday. It is going to be a beautiful day for cruising. It'll be a lot of fun, everyone turn up and enjoy Old Town, enjoy watching the kids in the fountain and everything else that is involved with cruising. Counselor Langer?
Sherwood Main Street conducted their first, first Fridays. It was the same day as the grand opening of the fountain. Sounds like it went real well, but that's where businesses down here in Old Town stay open a little longer. Some of them were open until 9:00 PM and offering free things, you know, free teas or maybe even a little massage here or there, snacks and whatnot, or they just stayed open for folks to enjoy later. So that's something that's going to be going on here for several months, getting more and more promotion through Sherwood Main Street. That's the first Fridays, first Friday of each, each month downtown.
Outstanding. Other announcements from councilors? We are adjourned.